Thank you. Thank you. I need, I need all the help I can get. Do I have a, oh, public comments is first, but first, do I have a motion for adoption of our agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor? Okay, it's adopted by unanimous consent. And now the next step is public comment. We don't really have anyone in the room. And the committee is not accepting online public comments, so public comment is closed. Next, what we've got is a bit of a meet and greet with our public works director. So come on up. I, I put this on the agenda because I thought it would be fun to just have a chance to chat with Rebecca. And she could tell us, first of all, a little about her background, a little bit about her first few days on the job. And then we could offer whatever chatting we want to. So you don't have to like be recognized. You could just talk because this is a conversation. So Rebecca.
There we go. Thank you. Interesting few weeks on the job. We had storms and we've had various things, but definitely hit the ground running. The staff has been amazing. It's a great group of people here, very collaborative and helpful. And we've really come together as a team. So I think it was a really good team building exercise to have some storms right off the bat to start with. So I appreciate that. A little bit about me. So I have a fairly extensive engineering background. I started my career doing distribution engineering and then kind of moved over into civil engineering and then moved to transportation engineering and then went to doing vertical construction. But the bulk of my career has consisted of government work. So I have worked for various government agencies. So I have a lot of experience in that. And so this is a really comfortable transition for me into this position. I'm originally from Washington state. My family is here. I also have family in California. So I've lived in California in the Bay area for a while. And that's where I started doing vertical construction, building hospitals for Stanford. And then also UCSF Medical Center in the city, did a vertical project for them as well. And then decided the Bay area was a little bit pricey for me and I wanted to buy a house on my own. So I moved to Nevada and started doing, developing there. I went to work in the private sector there as well. Working for an owner who had 70,000 acres of raw land. It was industrial commercial land that I helped with the engineering and development overseeing the consultant work on that. And doing negotiations with utility companies, et cetera, for right of way. So. And then decided to make the move back here when I saw this job posting. It seemed like a really good fit for me. And I was right. It feels great to be here. Thank you.
Yes, welcome. And what drew you to Lake Forest Park? Because we're kind of smaller than the scope of some of the things you've done before.
I think, well, I did a lot of research. I do a lot of research and I really enjoyed that. And noticed that there was a lot of community involvement here. And I think that that's, I really respect that a lot. I really respect how we've been really good stewards, I feel, in this area of the community, of the parks, of, you know, being sensitive about the trees, all the lake, all of these things. And just really trying to preserve the beautiful Washington that I grew up with. And, you know, there have been changes in, in other cities that I've witnessed since growing up. My grandma lived on Magnolia. And so I spent a lot of time traveling to Magnolia when I was little. And that actually gave me the itch for construction because I could smell asphalt weren't being done. And I thought, oh, this is a good move for me. But, you know, I just, I am just so impressed with how preserved it has stayed here. Even though we have a lot of traffic, we're still very in tune with bicycling and the pedestrian pass and keeping everything looking as naturalized as possible. So that was a huge draw for me.
Right. Council members. Go for it. What do you do in your time?
Time. I love design and architecture. So that is a big, big thing for me. I love to go for hikes. I love nature and, you know, spending time with my family. It's been a real treat for me to be back here and be so close to my family, even though it's a little bit of a drive. I love it.
All right, perfect. We're doing. Wanted to appreciate, wanted to say thank you for working with me and Katie on that council corner article was really, I think emblematic of the teamwork that you're trying to foster in your department. Appreciate that lots.
Thank you. Pleasure.
So I cheated because I didn't know this was happening tonight. So Rebecca and I had a meeting on Friday just to sort of know each other. Introduced myself to her, but I just want to say I really appreciate that you've already been driving around the city, checking out what's happening in different corners of it's just taking a really proactive approach.
Thank you.
And the thing about Lake Forest Park is, you know, my kids grew up and went to public school here. So they knew kids in all parts of the city. And I thought I knew all the neighborhoods. But when I ran for city council, the first time I realized there's all these little pockets that are, you know, sometimes there are some places where you think you were in the foothills of the Cascades. That's how, you know, how natural it, it looks. So good that you're driving around. It took me about 20 years to drive around and see all of the neighborhoods. So.
Thank you.
Anything else? Did you, did you, do you like first part or are you living in the first part?
I'm actually in Kirkland. I got an apartment in Kirkland. So I figured that was close. And it was helpful for me. And it's a beautiful drive from there to here too. So I feel really fortunate.
Not, not to sound like the federal government, but what, what do you see basically coming up in the next, you know, few months that are going to take up a lot of your time?
Well, we have, as far as this, this building and our facilities, I think that that is going to take some time just to get facilities, portions of the work up to speed. Also getting some programs, some additional programs in place, I think for staff so that we have process. I enjoy, you know, winging it as much as the next guy, but I also, I love having process. And I think it puts us in a good position to be responsive and efficient in our work. So that's something just more on the in-house side of things. On the out, outward side of things, of course, attending to the, the projects that we have going right now and working through the mentoring with my project manager, helping us get through those repetitive tasks so that we get very comfortable in our project management and just watching those projects move forward with the various funding mechanisms and stages they're at in design.
Go ahead, Summer.
What is, what is upcoming project that you're the most interested in that you know about already?
Well, I think the park project is very interesting. I'm excited for that. It is still, there's quite a bit about that that I'm not fully immersed in yet because I'm not necessarily leading that project, but I am very interested in it to see how that progresses forward. The larger roundabout project that we have going is also very interesting and challenging to accomplish that project. There's a lot of engineering detail, which of course is one of my favorite things. So we're working through that part of it as well and working with the community in that area too. I always feel like we have opportunities to rise to the occasion. We have challenges where we have a constrained site. I really, when I was working in downtown San Francisco, I enjoyed the fact that we had difficulties trying to figure out how we would get materials in and out on a, you know, with all the traffic and the people and the streets. And we can have those same opportunities here to refine our skill set working in constrained areas.
Thank you. Welcome to Lake Forest Park. Want to express appreciation in our last meeting, which was the Budget and Finance Committee and your quick review of the project where you identified that the costs were not consistent with what we thought the project might be for the electrical vehicle chargers. And so I very much appreciated that sort of big picture review to say, is there congruency between the scope and the cost? And I think that's really important as we go forward in our projects to always make sure that there's good congruency. So that we're not trying to take on a project that we might not be able to afford. So very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think, you know, stewarding the projects forward that way and being really responsible, especially because we represent the community here, that we are fiscally responsible as well as have a project that is viable and we can move it forward. So thank you.
And before we wrap up, I have a couple of questions. Have you done grant applications before for parts of your projects?
Yes.
Because as you have probably heard, we, we are not a hundred percent, but heavily dependent on grants for those wish we could do kind of projects, you know?
Yes, I have had the opportunity to, to put together grants. I put together grants in very short order. I had done one for an actual electric vehicle charging station project in California with the California Energy Commission and spent most of the night after I found out that it was coming forward, putting together the grant application with a group of others and was successful with that grant. So I feel really comfortable. I'm, I'm really fearless and responsible though, moving forward. So I will try for anything that I think would benefit our community here. And I understand the need for the grants. Absolutely.
You like that. So do you have any questions for us?
I just really enjoy getting to sit down with everyone individually and hearing what your hot topics are, things that are of concern, having a really good communication between us, being given information because I know that you're out with the public and hearing, you know, feedback from the public and getting that is really helpful for me with the projects and kind of customizing the projects as we move forward with that feedback. So that's a great value to me. So I don't have any real specific questions right now, except those things which we can have one-on-ones at some point, I'm sure.
Yeah, as we go along, I'm sure you'll get to know us more. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your taking the time to meet with us here. So.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it as well.
Okay, our next agenda item is Community Development Director Hoffman. And oh, before we get to the next three items, I just want to say, this is because we're trying to do a one day follow-up retreat this year. And because we're trying to do it between nine and 3:30, since it's a Saturday, we're trying to do a little bit of prep work at this meeting. So you have some up-to-date information. Some of it you probably already know, some of it you might not know. So the next three items are basically in the way of prep work for the retreat on Saturday. So Mark, the floor is yours. Do you have experience writing grant applications?
And I'm trying to calm down. So in anticipation of that, instead of rambling for an hour and getting you all lost, I wrote down a list. Doesn't represent necessarily all active projects, but it's everything on our radar that is anticipated. So I don't know if I've used the right words between active and anticipated, but there, it's a to-do list of things that need to be done. It captures prior retreat items to some extent, things that are already completed, like last year's comp plan. So I was helping to kind of go through them and then see where the interest was or the questions might be. And I think you're familiar with most of them.
Yes, and I would note that a lot of the emphasis in our previous retreats materials, which you may not have looked over very recently, is are there creative ways to deal with affordable housing? And also are there, is there some way we could update our critical areas ordinance at some point? So those are the general topics that are in our, in the, in the bullets from our previous retreat, but of course, we can talk about anything related to housing and critical areas at the retreat.
And I'll start with the end. There's another at the end for anything else you want to tack on. What, what also is not on this list are the different categories the Community Development Department does. Current planning, which is project review, building inspections, building permits. So I have some news there, code enforcement as well. So there's many aspects that keep us busy all day long that are not represented here. So this is not by any means the full record. But a short update on building, we have an opportunity right now with the retirement of Calvin, the building official, and a vacancy at permit coordinator to go all digital. We've been waiting for a grant or some opportunity to make that jump. Calvin was all paper. He's, he retired, so we respected that. With the vacancies, we are, I called it today stumbling towards digital intake and review. It's going to be a learning curve with SafeBill and future staff, but that's taking up a lot of time. In the gaps in between that, last year, as you're aware, you adopted the comprehensive plan to meet the Growth Management Act deadline. And that had some, not items left over, the implementation chapter, for instance, certification, the Affordable Housing Committee comments and review Puget Sound Regional Council. And it was just a starting point. By no means did it intend to capture absolutely everything for the next 20 years and be done. So it's complete. We did it. I'm grateful for the planning commission and the work they put in. We are following up with the Affordable Housing Commission comments, both in the implementation chapter this year and beyond in regard to affordable housing. My next step is to actually work with the website, but not publish or print too many copies because we're soon going to have a new comp plan. But Puget Sound Regional Council is a next step. We have to submit the comprehensive plan to them. They are responsible to review the transportation sections for information or elements only and certify it. And then we become eligible for regional transportation grants. So that's ongoing. The second one on the list is very much related to that, and that's the middle housing development regulations. You saw that. Yeah. It was a little delay. I know. It could be. It's not that bad. It's urgent. And so in that sense, it's a different document. It's not goals and policies like the comprehensive plan, but it's the development regulations that apply to specific properties. The planning commission is struggling with minimum mandates or other items. We are running out of time. So March 11th is the next meeting. The consultants are all committed to being there. We're going to address that issue. The other topics may make it into a parking lot. The reason the time is so important in the face of doing good work is the model ordinance comes into effect July 1st for tier three cities. We haven't analyzed how bad that is. We've just proceeded with, we don't want to be subject to that.
But Mark, when do you think the planning commission will get recommendations to counsel? Do you have a goal date?
My goal and the consultant's goal soon will be that March 11th, we have a consensus. We know what the amendments are. We know the draft. What comes after we're have that comfort level is we need to submit them to Department of Commerce. We're going to ask for expedited review. We may not be granted. And that review takes 60 days. So if we achieve a consensus, go with the minimum mandates, have the draft code language. I could send that to Commerce, start that clock, finish up that planning commission, do a public hearing, and then get them to city council for a, as extended a review and discussion as, as possible. But it may not include certain specific items such as changing or looking at frontage regulations or consolidating zoning districts. It's been all part of that conversation at the policy level. They're in support of it. But we may not have time to do that in depth before the June timeline. I would like to have May and June at city council for three whole meetings as opposed to a rush where we use workshops and committee of the whole and so.
If we make changes, will it have to go back to the state for review?
I.
Does it just depend on how substantive they are?
Exactly.
Okay.
If their wholesale changes or changes in direction, then essentially they'd have to start their review ever.
For people who may be watching this video, we're having thunder, lightning and hail right now. So. So if you see our eyes rolling, that's why. Sorry, Mark. Mother Nature is interrupting you.
Yes. Go ahead, please.
So I had, so this is a new code for all of us as it's coming and being birthed in the planning commission. Do you feel that there may be a value for us to see the planning commission's version that goes off to the state just so that we familiarize ourselves with the content, even though we know it's not necessarily something for us to review on a?
So, yeah.
Okay, I'd like.
It's not as legislative as the comprehensive plan was, you know, which is very high level. But at the same time, you're, it's not quasi judicial by any means. And we've prepared a very extensive library on the city's website. So if you're very enthusiastic, please dive in. It's, it's more, the more review and more documents than you need. But if, if an issue takes you to a particular House bill or guidance, it's, it's intended to be there to, so that you can at least have informed questions.
Awesome.
And so you could start that anytime. My intent after March 11th, if we have a consensus, is to start that overlapping kind of educational update type process.
Much appreciated.
Thanks. So I wanted to ask about the, the zone comp combining. Something I brought up at the council meeting last Thursday. That's something we did with the comp plan that we proposed sort of three core residential zones. And so do you think in terms of efficiency, is it better, since we're going to be overhauling the zoning regulations anyway for June and a lot of the zones, like the 9,600, the 10,000 are already quite similar? Would it be more efficient for the council to try to make those harmonizations with the other middle housing regulations versus waiting for the planning commission to kind of take it out of the parking lot?
It, it, it would. In an ideal situation, the problem with that is you're still dealing with the same person, which is me. If I could clone myself and do two separate efforts and have that bandwidth, I think that would work. But I don't, I don't see how we can change course at planning commission in that short order and start a track with two ordinances. So the preference that I've thought about over the last week is sort of a parking lot again, not stop the review or the amendment, but go with the mandates in one ordinance as we continue to work on the other items, such as the frontage. And, and the reason being is it, it feels like zoning district consolidation might be an easier, easier issue. There are two clear opportunities there, but that whole public process and being clear, or at least ensuring there's no unintended consequences will take time. And then the whole public awareness, you know, what are we doing? And so that's the time element. But plant, planning commission is fully supportive. That's been part of their discussion and homework. Since we left comp plan, they've just been more focused on the minimum mandates and they're close to a consensus on that. The other two difficulties with middle housing is the grant deliverables are due in June and the contract with SCJ Ensign. That's a focus. Climate element, the next item is throughout 2025. The grant deliverable is due in June. That's a very much a draft form, just has to exist. And we could share that and be reimbursed. They're making great progress. They are on time with the, the climate policy advisory team. The planning commission will play a role in that. After there's a draft, they'll make a recommendation. And that leaves the second half of the year for city council and commerce and so forth. That is the 2025 amendment to the comprehensive plan.
And just for clarity's sake, we got one kind of amendment a year. So that we're using this as our one amendment a year. But we, as we're moving through some of these zoning or anything else comes back to the comp plan, we can do an amendment next year if we need to. We don't like to do it every year, but that's, that's.
Now every 10 years, you have to do that, that wholesale, big look. Every year you get one opportunity. You can group items, but it's one amendment. And then there are several categories of emergencies and rare opportunities. But it just works together to group four, five, six issues into one amendment.
And this year, the July 1st deadline kind of tells us when it's happening.
But that, the scope width cascade is a little longer through the end of 2025, and that's going very well. Some of the outcomes are this next item, incentives for affordable housing. Thursday night, you have the work plans for the committees and commissions, planning commission, add middle housing, climate element, and then a long laundry list of parking lot items that we've collected. And we've discussed over and over what those should be, what do we have bandwidth? Because of items coming out of their current work, they pivoted with item three on the work plan for Thursday night and called it incentives for affordable housing or housing affordability. And that's really where some of these items can be included. So as they look after the minimum mandates, in theory are in place, anything in excess of that can be incentivized with tools. And so they want to take a look at that, and this would afford them more time. And these are development regulation amendments can be made anytime. So their intent is to go right into that. At the last meeting, one commissioner brought up the frontage requirement for subdivision, being so big that you really can't take opportunity for flag lots and easements and flexibility in lot design.
Can I ask a question about the other category? I think it might be helpful if there's a longer list than they can do to share that with us at some point because the council could then weigh in on our policy priorities. And that doesn't mean they have to do, I know the planning commission doesn't have to do what we say. They can have their own initiatives, but still it would be helpful to know what they're thinking about. So.
I could share that list. So.
Yeah.
Their word was when you cut and paste, don't lose it. So I have it. I could share. Oddly, most of those can be put into three buckets that are reflected on the rest of these items. Tree board, parks and records.
Thanks. Okay.
Not all of them, but most of them. So the incentives for affordable housing by no means has to be the only thing. You can group many things together, give them more time to really analyze, but not so broad that they then run out of 2025. And then the next item, sign ordinance. The, the, what did I just do? The SEPA comment period is over. We've gotten one comment. I'm going to put that together. I view that more as, as we have time to take advantage of meetings to, to forge through city council and public comment and see if we can get to the other end.
My only request on that is once we pick it up again and start. My only request on that is once we pick it up again and start, let's just finish it. Rather than say, oops, other things are bumping onto our priority list. So let's find a time when we can wrap it up. As someone who's been around for all the iterations of it. I think I think Councilmember Riddle and I are the only ones who have been around for every every attempt to try to wrap it up.
And I think if if the stars align before this uh political um period where we have heard a lot of our citizens and and residents saying what's with all these signs and how do we control this? I think that was kind of one of the catalysts to bringing it to our attention.
Yeah.
I know so much to do.
No, oddly, it's more temporary sign and message and constitution. It's heavy on that side. It's fairly light on the commercial. As far as changes and amendments, um but with the election season season coming, temporary signs and the the inability to actually read what's on the sign and regulate, uh these would be nice to have in the spring and summer.
Yeah.
And not the fall. They were ready. And that is staff's intent to bring it back and um address it and and move forward. So we look for your support. Uh this next one's a little easier to explain. Critical areas ordinance needs to be updated on a cycle that coincides with the comprehensive plan. Uh it which was actually due a year before. Then they extended the comprehensive plan because of all the legislation. So the critical areas ordinance was extended to last December. Because it was such a heavy lift for all the cities um in King County and the metro Seattle area. Um there's another year. So we've received that letter from Commerce. Thank you for your comprehensive plan. Now where's your critical area ordinance? Even larger cities don't have that bandwidth. You know, whole departments focused on this and they're in the same position. We certainly are too. Given that, I haven't ex- exactly analyzed what that update would be. I know our critical area ordinance is relatively strong compared to most cities. It's based on best available science. Uh it doesn't immediately become apparent what the amendment would be or who could perform it or what the cost might be. That's the next step. Reboot. Um but that said, given given that we have this year, it's important to do that for commerce. Um they have a fallback for small cities like us and that's that's the category of um diligent pursuit, I believe are the words. If you're showing progress and can demonstrate that and are being cooperative, there is no downside. Ultimately, you'd be become ineligible for any grant that was based on growth management act compliance. There's an overlap. So even if we went into twenty twenty six, it's the next cycle. So um are they flexible? Yes. But are they flexible for two more years? No. So we have to do that. We're starting from a strong position. I would recommend doing it this fall.
I I I have a question on that. Um do we have to have the updated map for part of the ordinance? Because it seems to me that I believe from past reviews, our ordinance is is actually pretty good. But there's been some discussion of updating the mapping um so that we have, you know, accurate maps. So uh do they have to, can they, can the map come later than the ordinance?
They can be simultaneous concurrent and they could be separate.
Okay.
The map could come first. Um we, for instance, it's an, it's it's always going to be a guide, the way the code uh refers to it. And then site specific analysis for proposed project is required. That's not going to change. So it doesn't need to wait for the critical area ordinance update. There are sources of data from other agencies jurisdictions that are much better than our current map was based on. And we could certainly improve the quality of the guide relatively quickly. So even even if the critical area ordinance took some time to separate them out, you could adopt a new critical or critical area map.
Yeah, thanks. I'll echo the importance of the map because my understanding is that with the middle housing ordinance, it'll be portions of lots that have critical areas will be exempt, but not the entire lot. Therefore, it'll be very important for people to know exactly which parts of their parcel are allowable for middle housing or not.
And of the six or seven types of critical areas we have, we have new sources for each. The only questions become, do we have to pay? Will they share? How much does it cost? When could we have it? But and and that also goes into the question about G I S and where we store, who does it, who has that expertise? But the good news is the data sources are there, including a source for the landslide uh King County that was mentioned. We have that. We haven't followed through to see if they'll share it. In twenty nineteen, um um what was then D C G watershed was performing a shoreline master program update. Then COVID hit and that stopped. I don't think that got to council, but it was definitely in draft form. Uh that was even late for the last cycle. The next cycle was twenty twenty seven. For the last year, I've been trying to fill a gap with a new contract um it with uh facet. Um we have the money and professional services, but we don't have the bandwidth to use planning commission or city council. The first part of it would definitely be at staff level and it's doable. Um but our current uh shoreline master program is from twenty thirteen and it's a significant update. Now that we're in February twenty twenty five and we've clearly missed the last cycle. Uh the question then becomes, do we broaden that a little bit? And not just look at what else can be changed now since twenty nineteen, but broaden it and meet the next twenty twenty seven cycle. If critical areas ordinance is more of a priority, then it's likely that shoreline master program then comes second to that. But even then, can't wait. So a contract staff level and then at some point maybe early twenty twenty six um public input and so forth. I've been trying to prioritize it and then, you know, signs, climate element and so forth are just clearly more important. But it needs to be done.
I would just say, does it feel like anything that would happen in there would impact our shoreline work happening on the park? Or is nothing that out of whack?
It it's actually the opposite. If we were to do both this year, there would be confusion about which rules apply. The park applications are in, they're being reviewed under the twenty thirteen shoreline master program with a conditional use permit. There, the process is clear.
Okay.
Difference would be possibly under the new S M P, you wouldn't need a conditional use permit. We don't have a park zone or designation, but uh the process in our current plan allows for that design.
Okay.
So.
So it's clear now to kind of have them.
If you're doing both at the same time, then, yeah, when you answer a question, you have to say, well, today, but tomorrow. And then it's uh which one comes first? So a little delay in the update might be make the uh park review clearer.
Look, more clarity. I appreciate clarity.
Uh I I have a question, which is um I now recall that this was in process when I came on council, which was twenty twenty. And I believe our planning director at the time had the view that the changes were not greatly significant and that it might just be done with the council and not necessarily require review by the planning commission. I never saw the document. I don't know if that makes sense. I don't know if cutting out the planning commission is a good concept. I just want to throw that out for your consideration because that was that was his view at the time.
I I could look at that. I think in our current S M P and the shoreline act itself requires planning commission.
Okay. Well, just. Uh food for.
And Department of Ecology. So it's it's a little different than just the development uh code amendments. Yeah. Um but it it seems like a candidate because there's not a large scale policy shift. Our our shoreline is residential, except for Civic Club, uh Lakefront Park, um Sheridan Beach. And the regulations are more to address state level regulations um in the future as opposed to changing what's physically on our shoreline. Tree regulations, I I had anticipated in ordinance in November, December, and we kind of tried to deflect it. We're a little busy and then Drew, our urban forest planner is going to develop that with tree board. I think they're close. They have examples of past ordinance or the rationale behind the science. Uh and it's independent. It doesn't need to wait for me. It's something Drew can do with the tree board and seems to be able to go straight through to city council. The planning commission would defer to tree board. I don't know. There's a city policy that says everything must go through planning commission. Even though the code briefly says their advisory, so I think that's your choice. Um parks, recreation, open space, trails plan, post plan. During the budget, uh discussions since the retreat, there were several placekeepers or items in the last budget that were taken out. One that was left in for this plan is um sort of an update on inventory. What what does the city have and what is its current status? And that would lead to other amendments or other decisions. Um but let's start with updating the plan to figure out exactly what what that is. So that's what we have on the horizon. Corey and the P R A B, Parks Recreation, Parks Recreation Advisory Board would primarily be tasked with that this year, somewhat independent. I anticipate that being done this year.
I believe the last post plan wasn't approved by the council officially. Um is that correct? So we we probably would want to have it come to the council and get it officially approved uh with the updates.
Thank you. Could certainly do that. Now, but I bring it up and put it on this list. It's it's something we anticipate doing, but scope creep would be the problem. Whatever was imagined two, three years ago and then was taken out of the budget would have involved a consultant. And so what we envisioned with Corey and I and and the um board is not that.
I understand that you that a more modest scope and getting it done makes makes sense, but are you thinking November, December timeframe or Jeff? Because I assume this is not as urgent as some of these other things that have, you know, imposed deadlines.
No, it's it's more of a twenty twenty five work plan and um Corey has a lot of events this summer. But if the board has, and their work plan is Thursday night as well. So we could discuss that Thursday night, but they could work independently through the summer around events. Their regular meetings, hold those at the end of the month, every month, make progress and certainly um get that to council later in the year.
I'm sorry to do this. Um I'm just recalled that I believe Corey wanted and and the group and with my concurrence wanted to change the student representative to a regular community representative. So whatever housekeeping we have to do to make that so. I think that would be something we could do quickly in the council. It's just administrative. Um I don't think we'd have to, we could always have a student advisory council member at it if some, if we had a student who showed interest, but the success with the student representative has not really been there.
Okay, noted. I would offer at this point, the bandwidth for this year is already strained, but there are several items we absolutely need to talk about. The session runs through uh April in Olympia. There's widespread support for a transit oriented development um legislation to be adopted. The primary conversation is around parking or the inability to mandate certain parking ratios. We don't know how that will end up. Um but it's the third or fourth session that they've made the attempt. So it's likely we'll need to address some sort of legislation this year. Hopefully they'll be merciful and it won't be immediate. Um and the reason it's on our radar is if it includes language for future bus rapid transit, there are three radiuses for this community. Far in the future, but planned for. And so that's the the nuance that they're discussing in Olympia right now. If I try not to use acronym, acronym, it be R T comes out of that discussion and it's light rail, then it wouldn't have significant effect on us, but it's very much in draft form. This next one is also legislation. Um the comprehensive plan discussion at uh uh planning commission included economic development, the economic development element, town center. Let's not relook at town center this year. Uh but um what else can be done that is consistent with critical areas trees and and this residential community? Neighborhood commercial was that item. And this session, again, they have a house bill related to corner stores and restaurants that seems to have support. I don't know if it made it out of committee this week, but that's my next check. If that does become legislation, we would have to address it in our development regulations.
So do you think we need to looking in your crystal ball differentiate between kind of where we have our businesses right now versus what we would want to allow anywhere in a resident within the residential and having those kind of codes be separate, like kind of have the neighborhood commercial where we've got these nodes and the neighborhood business where it would be something that could be done in a home and not impact the community?
I think we do at uh at the comprehensive plan discussion level, it was more centered around home occupations. Consistency with residential and less about expanding the little neighborhood commercial. Nodes. Yeah. Uh you know, additional signage, but then maybe allow some level of commercial activity in a what represents as a single family or a low density residential. And so that was the discussion. There seemed to be support to at least examine it in this community without having a negative impact. This legislation would be different. There are large areas that have no corner store. And if this mandates certain thing, there are neighborhoods that this may be inappropriate. It 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 may be a one size fits all corner lot type mandate. Um and we would have to look carefully how that applies to the very residential areas in the city and critical areas. And then as we get to, oh, I'm sorry.
So I just want to clarify, in the event that bill eleven seventy five does not pass. And I think we've still, we've heard from members of the community that they would like us to look into some liberalization of where like neighborhood cafes could be. And so if the eleven seventy five does not move forward, would the planning commission still intend to investigate where it might be reasonable in the city?
Yes, but that was an item on the parking lot that's now replaced by the um tools or uh uh housing affordability. So that would have been a a second half of twenty twenty five item um to dive into. Now they've put that into the parking lot, but it's still something they would like to do.
Maybe that's good for twenty twenty six because we're already almost a quarter through.
Yes. And that that is staff's outlook is we're very much likely to be doing a comprehensive plan amendment in twenty twenty six to address something and development regulations. So it's an ongoing opportunity to make each document better and better.
Well, will there be any update to the noise regulations? Because when you are putting community businesses in residential, there's going to be noise and right now our noise ordinance is not really clear. It's it's, you know, other cities, it has the ten o'clock cutoff and here it's not as specific.
I I would offer you'd have to. I I don't, I haven't uh had the bandwidth to watch the discussions in Olympia. But in any city, introduction of that activity in residential, that is part of the discussion.
Well, I would suggest that we need to look at the noise ordinance and. Well, I would suggest that we need to look at the noise ordinance and maybe just do a housekeeping. Yeah.
That's a difficult one because the chief of police normally is the one that gets to decide what noise is. Yeah. And so we'll list that. So the next year, just so that we don't lose track, we receive and process wireless permits right now. You know, amendments to the equipment on town center, for instance, over the last year. And we have an existing wireless ordinance that's very outdated. The FCC has many declarations and rules and shot clocks and so forth since our ordinance was passed that need to be codified. With the city attorney's assistance, we are meeting those FCC requirements and are not held back by what is or isn't in our code. We're consistent. But we would like our code to be modernized so that it is better for applicants. By way of example, there is an existing monopole on the reservoir in the northeast part of town, and they are looking this year with an application to replace it with a 90-foot monopole. Not necessarily fully described in our development regulations. But the review process is pretty clear as far as the federal regulations. Not urgent, but very much wanted. This last one subdivision ordinance is something I heard about right when I started, but I'm not entirely sure what it consists of. But it's been on my radar. I think boundary adjustments on short plats were an issue in the past. And a relook at the subdivision ordinance in general was called for. But certainly I haven't seen any evidence that it's been a priority or is going to be a priority. Unit lot subdivision and condominium, condominiumization, where we looked at this spring with middle housing.
Could you describe whether you got some provisions? I've been on my radar, mostly thinking about it, you know, as a lawyer, how is that work? And our city attorney has shared with me another jurisdiction's ordinance on this issue, but how it seems like it's like it's an area the state legislature expects us to address.
Three sessions ago, it actually became mandated. And then they were successful with many other bills, middle housing. So it's been kind of on a backseat. But it's coming and I'm not an attorney by any means, and I haven't done these. I view it as very much like a townhome development where you own your unit and the footprint. And then you jointly own through that process common areas and or maintenance and obligations. That does come to the city. It is codified in the subdivision ordinance. And it's different than condominium, which apparently you can, in Washington, you can do right now. And you don't need anything from the city.
It's just having legal clarity about what you own and what you don't own and what your rights are and what your obligations are in the undivided lot is all important, or they'll just be crazy litigation. So anyway, it's, it's but they're calling it a unit lot subdivision. So you are buying some interest in the lot and you're buying your living unit. So it is a little bit like a condominium to me.
Yeah. And there, you know, and that's where the attorney portion comes in, the nuance between
I don't get the difference. I'm no expert and I don't get the difference. So you don't.
It's totally different than California law and so it's being codified here. And we have examples. We have a good guidance document on the city webpage and it will be part of the amendments. It currently is in the draft form from February and very much will be on March 11th at planning commission.
Council members, questions for anything to go under or other?
I guess as we get into that, there's going to be a lot of nuances around the unit and accessory dwellings. It's going to be, I won't say fun. I think it's going to be a thought experiment that we're going to have to work through and what it really means. Especially if not many others have already ventured into that territory and made their code updates. So.
In every city, every size is different. It will be a learning experience. There is opportunity for litigation between parties and codes will change. The intent and purpose of the legislation is clear. But the implementation is not clear. And so that's why you see three successive years of guidance from commerce. And that's very much what it is. Guidance. You should be okay. But how it fits here, we intend to meet the minimum mandates and then adjust from there carefully. And then learn from regional examples as opposed to marching out like some other cities.
Yeah, there's certain things we like to be on the edge of and our critical or our, you know, tree canopy is that there's other things we don't want to be on the edge of. So we'll wait.
I would add, there is a bill 1096 going through the legislature this year, which would also address lot splitting.
Yeah, it's a topic in flux and a little bit fraught, I think. So the only other item I have for maybe someday, so certainly not 2025 mark is perhaps registering, this gets into affordable housing, perhaps registering Airbnbs. Not necessarily regulating them at this stage, but at least knowing what we have. Because last time I looked, there were quite a few. I think I, I think there were like over 20 in Lake Forest Park that were Airbnbs or similar. I'd only looked on Airbnb, but similar rentals. And also perhaps if we have rooming houses, just registering them, you know, we do license adult family homes. And I certainly would want it, whatever we did to have sufficient staffing and revenue to cover its costs. But I do think when you look at affordable housing, one of the having Airbnbs is an impediment to affordable housing. Because it takes places off the market and tends to raise the, both the price of housing and the, and the cost of rentals. So just think we should at least have awareness at some point in time. And just like we have business licenses, we should, we should have some registration of Airbnbs. That's my personal view. So I'm just putting it on the other list.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
And similarly, I think one other, one other issue that other areas are seeing is investment companies coming in, purchasing and holding and things of that nature. I don't think that's as huge of an issue here. But it's something for us to think about. Again, it's, we want housing for people. We want people in our community. We want to create community. And so I don't know what that legislation might look like. I know other places have done some things. Some very strict, I mean, but I just want to make sure that, yeah, we do make sure that our homes are places for people to live and work and actually enjoy and not just sit and wait for investment and selling.
Council member Bowman, I can believe that knows this, but some of the units in your, in your community work for investors.
Yeah, I don't know the number, but I want to say maybe 20%.
So it is an issue to think about and it could be connected to the Airbnbs.
I was even thinking more as we, as we start developing, you know, things that look more like townhomes or, you know, duplexes, that's going to garner a lot more interest. Once we've hit some level of density that would make that appealing to investors. And so I'd like to have us have something on the books before that becomes a problem.
So let's talk about this very topic.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Oops, pushed the button. So there is a copy of the community survey in your packet was mailed out. I also have given you a full copy of that. We had Chelsea Benning come review that with you. So if you do have any outstanding questions about that, if you want to get those to me, I'm sure we could have them pass along some information. And speaking to the deputy mayor today, what we thought we'd do is at least give you an update on the public engagement over the next several months leading up to, as you'll see, the two public hearings in June and July. And then that decision would, if council chooses to put a levy on the ballot, a levy measure on the ballot in November, that deadline is August 5th. So as you know, or have seen, we've been doing some published content, news flashes in our newsletters, e-newsletters, looking at a launch of the website next month. Continuing published content and then in April on through July, we'll be doing community presentations. Mayor is already scheduled to go to Rotary. As we get things fired up, we'll get information out to the public that if they want spokespeople, and that'll probably be the chief and myself to come to events. At the last levy, there were, this obviously was during COVID. So these were all by Zoom, but we had community groups reach out to us and have us participate, answer their questions. And so that's what those community presentations are as well as going to the farmer's market as well as maybe, you know, town hall type of meetings. And so it's just kind of a catchall for those types of outreach. Now, so see us going out. Well, the timing may not work. I was hoping for, well, regardless, it will work national night out. Council chooses one way or the other. I'm sure it'll be a topic of discussion. We'll be there to address that as well. So happy to answer any questions on it. I hate to be the shortest presentation you have tonight. So give me some questions. But this is just pretty much the layout for the next several months. So this public published content will probably include some videotaped messages for the public that could be on our website. So nothing that we have currently, but something we'd be working towards with the consultants over the next couple of months. So any questions?
With the, with this outreach, are you going to, will there be a way for the public to be? I know that they can ask questions to the council, but will there be maybe a portal where they can ask specific questions? Once you get the the, the website set up, maybe they could specifically ask questions. Because I know that that was one of the comments that they had was the outreach and being able to communicate their concerns.
Yeah. So I believe the way we've got to set it up and Matt can correct me if I'm wrong, is we will have an email address specific to this process that they could send that to. Obviously, you know, the chief and I aren't hard to find. So if they want to reach out that way as well, and then I think what we've done in the past is, you know, that Q and A then gets posted on the website so that hey, I go on the website, I see somebody's already asked this question, I can read and see what the response to that was.
Yes. I've mentioned it before, but one of the things I'm most interested in is the educational aspect that we're going to be going through with our community. Would counsel and be interested in having a kind of an education session for us on how the the process would work, what it would look like in a way that we could have also the community be able to ask questions as well?
Can you be a little more specific on the process? What do you mean?
The taxes, how the taxes are structured, things like that. And then what it means, what they'll see, you know, if we were to put a levy on there, what they'll see on the ballot and what that means. And, you know, how do they, you know, that's the one thing that's always annoyed me is the language that we're required to put on the ballot is useless.
Absolutely agree. We're actually working on some messaging right now, and that's the thing that we're trying to ferret out is what is the easiest way to say that? That is understandable to every reader. But definitely, I think, you know, a presentation in front of council or to have a town hall where you try your best to explain that whole process. I think the biggest thing is, is understanding the whole levy. The tax levy process of as your property value goes up, the levy rate for the city goes down. So you collect the same amount plus new growth and the 1% that council can take council manically. Otherwise, you know, without new growth in that 1%, you collect the same amount year after year after year roughly. And that's no way to run a business. We're not a business, but our costs are going up.
Yeah, you know, educate people on how to go to the website and figure out what their pie chart looks like and be, you know, so they know where their money is going. Everyone wants to know where their money is going.
Yes, the King County website is great, and I think we need to have our own visuals. Because I think for a lot of people, one picture, I remember when the buyer commission put their materials together, they showed the levy versus operating costs, the levy income versus operating costs and the increasing triangle of gaps, gappage and things like that. But also some of the King County visuals are really excellent. So I think they communicate a lot. I also think the saying last year, where this year we're getting $34,000 from our 1% is very helpful. If I could add one other thing, I have talked with the consultants about having not just a town hall where people can ask questions, but a workshop like we did for the parks. So you could have tables with different aspects of the financials with visuals. And then people, you could have people like council members or staff standing there and answering questions. And then people could, you know, jot down comments and questions. So I've suggested that was a very effective format for our kind of community where it isn't just talking heads and then questions. It's, it's kind of interactive and lots of good feedback on that. So just wanted to mention that. And then the mayor and I have talked about the possibility that there, there are a few individuals who follow the budget and they could be pro or con. But actually having individual outreach to those people who are kind of representative of the community, not necessarily a formal committee that has to have meetings and things like that, but doing some informal outreach to influencers. I guess would be the way I would say it. So anyway, that, those, I just wanted to add those elements, they fit under community presentations, but those are some of the things I've been thinking about.
And to the deputy mayor's point, I mean, the mayor, Director Vought and I have already met with some community members, not only to talk about the adopted budget, but to discuss the gap and why we feel that, you know, we've got to find another tool to fill that gap. So those discussions have already begun.
So thanks for your, you know, timeline. It's very helpful. For the community presentations, are you preparing a slide deck for it?
Today? No, but yes. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So I was hoping that you'd share that with us because it's nice to have talking points.
Yep.
I believe every council member will have them because you are all a part of the community outreach, whether it's informal or formal.
I'll for it myself. Looking at the survey results, one of the things that was most important to the community regarding Prop 1 back in 2021 was not having a detailed list of projects. So my question is, at what point in this process would we have a list of projects that we could provide to the community to educate them on, you know, here's the specific things, we want this much money for this project?
I think that's going to be determined by how the council chooses to run this levy, should you choose. Is it project oriented? Is it to fill the funding gap that we have just merely for personnel? You know, the personnel side is a very easy thing to tell. The project side, you know, obviously. you know, it's this project, it will cost this much to build, you know, this is its deliverable timeframe. I think one of the discussions that we've had to date through the budget process with the new OO2 funding is you now have a dedicated source of funds for some of the, the projects that were ranked high in the, in the community survey and were part of that last levy process. So I think there's a lot more discussion among council and the mayor of the direction that you feel this levy, should you go forward with it, should pursue, you know, is, is it project oriented or is it paying for the bills that escalate exponentially that we've been unable to keep up with?
Yeah. So I think that conversation will have to occur as we move from the spring into the summer. So we, we talk about what the options might be, conceptual options for what the levy lid lift might look like. For example, what a lot of communities are doing right now is a public safety levy lid lift because of the attorney and legal and court and policing and jail and insurance related costs all going up so significantly. And so that, that would be one option. And, and yes, I think that could be broken out. Not just, it isn't necessarily a project, but it could be broken out. Yes.
If I could follow up, I think the sense that I'm getting from the survey is that if we are backfilling, if we just say we want $500,000 to cover increased personnel costs, that the community would not find that sufficient, that they would want something more detailed as to, we want $100,000 for this position or $100,000 to cover jail expenses, that they, they would want us to be as specific as possible.
Yeah, absolutely agree.
So with that in mind, what do you see as sort of the timeline and presentation or discussion with, with the council? Because I see that you're already planning to go out for community presentations in April. So are we, are we, what are we presenting to the, to the community? Are we presenting, you know, that we want to increase funding revenue for general operating expenditures such as public safety? Or are we proposing that we want to do capital projects? Because this, at the end of February seems awfully rushed in order to put something together that we haven't really talked about as to, are we trying to fund capital projects or are we trying to fund components of our general fund such as public safety? I just feel like we're, we're going to be ending up moving very quickly with not knowing what we're wanting to do. And I'm not sure that 2025 has that sense of urgency that we have to solve this problem this year, if we haven't really put the time and effort to understand what it is that we're asking for and why.
So I can see your concern when you look at community presentations in April that soon. And that, I believe, is just the mayor's visit with Rotary. And I think that's just targeted to talk about the challenges that we face, you know, the increasing costs, where our revenues are to our expenditures. These are all flexible. I wouldn't run out and, you know, we have none in March and I don't see us running out in April and saying, we figured this out. But I think by the time we get to May, you know, sometime by April, we've, council's going to have to have this discussion and decide, you know, how that moves forward, because we would then need to start putting together those community presentations, whether it is capital projects or whether it is, you know, personnel. The issue is, is we have an ongoing deficit related to those ongoing costs and they're not necessarily capital projects.
So I think the original outreach is going to involve continued outreach on our financial situation and what the status is of our, our, our budget gaps generally. The, the, the gap, the declining levy rate over time with just the 1%. And just so people understand those basics, they are so complicated. And as well as the results of the survey, I think we should share the top priorities from the survey with the community because not everybody was paying attention and not everybody has read the materials that have gone out. So again, reminding people. So I see in early, like in March and even into April, that's the nature of the community outreach is just basic background. I think then council in April needs to start discussing based on the survey results, kind of conceptual priorities for what we would, for what we would look at and options. And so certainly if you have options that you see for a levy lid lift, you can share them with council member for Tani, me, or the mayor, and we will start compiling that information for discussion starting in April. Then the, the summer community outreach, council member Lebo would be focused on reminder of the economic background and budget background. And then, you know, here are some concepts. So we would get community input. We wouldn't just make a decision. We get community input on what we would want to, want to fund. Yes, mayor.
State of the city kind of conversation. This is a discussion to help the group and the community understand better where we are and where we've been, where we need to go. And I think to Mr. Hill's point about the composition, as well as the deputy mayor's point about the composition of whatever you choose to put into the mix here or not, I would invite you to take a look at some of the other levies that other cities have done in the past. Bellevue did an interesting mix of, I'm going to read it because I will get it wrong otherwise, neighborhood safety, connectivity and congestion. There's lots of different needs in this community. And right now, it has absolutely been, it's clear from what I'm hearing now and what we heard previously, that the community's expectation is that we are going to be very specific about the term and very specific about the composition of, of the mix of whatever choice that you choose to do, if you choose to do something. And so I think everything's on the table at this point. We have compelling needs and I think this is really about bringing people into the mix to understand where we are as a community and what, and being informed by the, the survey about the direction that they're expecting us to go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we can also, I think that's a really good point that we can look at what other communities are doing or are thinking about or have done. And we can bring some of those ideas into the April conversations that we'll be having. So we can talk about conceptually what the options are. And then, as I said, the continued community presentations, we can get input from the community on that as well as, I, I agree with the mayor. I mean, having, being specific and having a specific term are the messages from the community.
Yes. And I think the other thing is educating the community what happens at the end of the term. Because I think some folks may not realize then the, 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 the the amount we collect goes back down. It, it isn't, that's what the six year is. And that would likely be, if the community likes what we're doing, we'd likely be renewing or, or putting up a different kind of levy. But just know that it doesn't stay that high always.
Anything more for city administrator Hill or the mayor? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And now, speaking of public safety.
How's that? The locker room upgrade is scheduled for Mark, March 24th. So after four years of waiting to get this project off the ground, we finally got that moving. And then guild negotiations are nearly complete and they're in now in the redlining phase. So we'll get that going. And I'll just say that, that's gonna, that's part of the reason why we've got the issues with our budget is the cost of our staffing there. Current staffing, where we're at, in the last two years, we've hired six new officers and promoted to reassign five people. So we have right now one open spot with a lateral applicant currently in background doing their phase, their checks in their phase. That means no academy, straight to field training, which is a good sign. So if we can get this person to pass their background, I gave them a conditional offer. If they pass, then we can get fully staffed that day that that happens. But then two more open spots open up. One is a sergeant that's retiring in May. And then another officer is leaving in separation on Saturday. And then one thing that we did get is Amanda Johnson, one of our officers, didn't make it through FTO, but was assigned the traffic support officer position. And she is doing a phenomenal job. I can't tell you how thankful and grateful that the city administration and the council did on this budget to get this position because it is doing so good work. And I'll get into that a little bit. Our UAV drone program, the equipment is secured and several staff members have certification and training. So the program's getting close to launching. You all met K-9 Bella. We've got that program running. We've got our SWAT position was filled with Frankie Montague. He's passed all of his training. So I think there's one more thing that he needs done. And so he's going well with the program. And then our detective unit, as you know, for quite a while, we had one detective running about 80 plus cases at a time. Detective Zabota is in there and doing extremely well, and they've gotten it down to 45 cases. So they should be in the 12 to 15 each range, but they've definitely gotten it down. So they've done good there. So all of our specialty units are doing amazing. I'm going to talk about traffic because everybody loves traffic. So right now, the unit is developing into what we believe is a very robust unit. Commander Zanella is going to oversee the unit, which includes Sergeant Walker is going to be the sergeant in car, in charge of the traffic unit. And then we have Officer Carl, Carl's root, which is already our traffic officer. Unfortunately, he hasn't really spent time completely dedicated to doing that because we've had staffing issues with the road. But once we get our staffing issues taken care of, he'll be solely dedicated to traffic. And then we have the open officer traffic position that you all approved. So once I've got the staffing, then I'm going to put it out to the officers to fill that second spot. And then Amanda, our traffic support officer. So we've got a sergeant, two officers and our support officer and our traffic unit. What that means for us in the city is they've been actively engaged in the traffic calming meetings and initiatives. The radar trailer is finally being deployed on a regular basis. Officer Johnson is spearheading follow-up on improved communication with our citizens and streamlining data entry and output. Because we all have a lot of on our plate and now she is dedicated to making sure that communication doesn't fall through the cracks. When requests come in, much better communication. Extra patrols are being organized, including efforts related to our state's distracted TZT driving, which has been on hold. And now it's getting a little bit more robust and we'll have folks dedicated and somebody that's coordinating all that information. Parking enforcement will be introduced throughout this unit. Events like child safety checks for the, the seats that are in the vehicles will be in the works. We'll be doing regular social media messages on traffic safety from Officer Johnson. And then we're being, we're considering equipping the traffic unit with e-bikes, particularly bolster improvement on the Burke Gilman Trail and the town center as a theft deterrent. So we're looking a lot of different things and, and I've talked to Commander Zanilla about some of these enforcement issues that we do on states, State Route 522, where we have big, huge reader boards, big signs saying beware, officers are out enforcing right now. So if an officer stops you, you deserve a ticket because it's going to be so obvious. We've done that in the past and we need that reputation back that our officers are going to stop and ticket you when you come into our city. It's been so incredibly difficult for many years with staffing and all the things that have been going on. And now that we're getting a better, robust traffic unit, I'm excited to get that done. And Officer Johnson has dedicated a lot of time to traffic camera tickets as designed and is lessening the burden on our regular patrol staff. So it's doing a really, really good job. And I keep seeing positive outcomes here. Crime on 2024. So while detailed crime breakdowns are going to be done in the PD annual report and we'll get much more into that. The city's issues primarily continue to be property crimes, particularly shoplifting at locations such, such as Ross, Riot 8 and Albertson's. And yes, I did call out the companies, but it is what it is. Top call locations are the town center, the gas stations at Arco and Chevron, our city parks, which are basically the four that we get the most calls are Horizon View, Animal Acres, Lion Creek and Grace Cole Parks. Our com, our apartment complexes, Woodland North, Wildwood Apartments and Watercrest, they get the most crime that's going on. And then other businesses like Taco Bell, our marijuana dispensaries and deja vu. Yes, I did call out all those places, but that is where our crimes are and that's our top locations. It is what it is. The flock system is being looked at into a huge resource for lowering crime. More on that on a much later date. Councilmember Goldman's been helpful in trying to work an angle there. Many cities are going to this flock system, which is license plate readers that give us resources to do follow-up and get a, kind of get ahead of crime in some cases. So. And then Linwood Jail is operational with LFP being the first outside agency. And we're doing virtual court with them. And I attended one of the sessions where Judge Grant did a phenomenal job. She just did a great job. There's some attorney issues that, that administrator he'll be working through with defense attorneys and getting more coverage in the prosecuting attorney coverage, that kind of thing. But it's going well. And then, um, let's see. For you, for just a quick thing, I really don't go over too much in our annual report, but I wanted to say that our year end reports that we've done, we had two vehicle pursuits last year, one use of force, one complaint. That's really, really low. And that's really good that those things were happening because you're going to expect to get into pursuits. In fact, there was one kind of today where we use the Star Chase system. And that's our second deployment, but I'll tell you more on that on another day. And then we have eight registered sex offenders in the city, which is pretty low. We've gone up pretty high in different situations. Some of the group homes have had sex offenders living in there. But we're at eight at the moment for the city, which is pretty good. And then our challenge is, is the fleet for sure. That is our problem and council, I need you guys to fix this and help me out with this. I know that the, the levy is going to be a huge portion of that that's helpful. The police department's biggest strain is our personnel salaries and benefits and those costs and insurance. But the, the biggest problem that we have with resources is the vehicles. That's the biggest problem. We have over 10 vehicles that are overdue for replacement and I need four right now. I have a probably 13, 14 page report for council member Lebo that asked about the different vehicle stuff. So I'm working on that with Administrator Hill and we'll have a full comprehensive report for that in March at the budget meeting. And then the complete annual report, like I said, will have more information. One other issue that's come up as a pretty big challenge is public disclosure staffing. So we're currently lacking the capacity to vote necessary time to redacting camera footage. And recent changes have made this process even more consuming. And so we're trying to explore some different solutions. But I just want to kind of make you aware that this remains a significant challenge. This kept, happened to be something that came up last week. I've only briefly talked to Administrator Hill a little bit about it. But it's not something that brings in revenue, but it is a very big strain on our staff where, where we have to physically watch videos, the entire process and redact certain portions of it. So it gets very intensive in time and taking away what normally our commanders are doing or records or different things. So we'll work through it, but I needed to plant those seeds to know that that's another issue that we're challenging. And remember, lastly, read the CA reports because that's where we try to update council on a lot of different things that we're doing in the city or the police department. So that's as quick as I can go. Good. All right. Any questions from the council? Yes.
Uh, two questions. The first, I know there was a change in state law. Two questions. The first, uh, last year, there was a change in state law. Has deja vu started serving alcohol yet?
I don't believe so yet. There was about a year or so that, that before they even got to that point. So I will check on that. I don't believe yet.
And then the second question, last month, the council adopted the Healthy Streets program. I was just curious where the traffic calming group is on spooling that up and publicizing that to the community.
Oh, we were part of developing it with a group with, with you two. And thank you very much. And we are, we have not done too much with it because we've been trying to get the group together. I believe in about two weeks, we're going to be meeting with the mayor, city administrator Hill and transpo group on an overall, how is traffic calming group? What direction? What is our authority? How we're going to go about things? But the Healthy Streets initiative is definitely in those, in that conversation. And then once we start figuring out how our group's going to go, we'll get word out to the community, these maps that folks can go. folks can go, oh, I live in this area. I want a petition to do this kind of stuff. So that'll be part of that whole long list of that traffic unit and traffic calming.
Thank you.
You're welcome. What else? All right. Yes.
Thank you, Chief, for that really succinct report. Appreciate it. And I'm looking forward to the annual report. Just one question on the, uh, public disclosure thing. Um, you, it was redacting traffic camera footage?
No, this is body one camera.
Body one. Okay. That makes much more sense. Thanks. Okay.
Yeah. Just briefly, there's criminal history and different things that are not in juveniles, those kind of things need to be redacted. And, uh, we have auto redacting software, but there's, when AI is working on it, does a pretty good job. But then when it's up happening is some of the screens show criminal history or different things that need to be redacted. And so the person has to physically go in and, and manually, uh, close those things off. But the entire time they're watching the video to make sure it's done correctly. And then we supply that to the prosecutor and then they do it to the defense and we need to make sure that we're following all the CGS rules. So if you watch a 45 minute video, sometimes there's four of those videos because you have four officers recording something. So it gets pretty time intensive and consuming.
Yeah. So I just want to say that's an example of how the law enforcement system, which includes the court system, requires something which we didn't have before as an expense. It's, it's not completely new, but it's a newer expense that we have. Um, and related to that is the Washington Supreme Court, um, is pretty much on track to require the public defenders cut their workload dramatically. Which means that we might have to double the number of defense attorneys. And it comes at a time when it's hard to find, uh, defense attorneys, uh, to hire. Because it isn't like, uh, there are fewer law school graduates these days and they're not as much interested in public interest aspects of public defense. So, uh, and some of that goes with the fact that they have traditionally been paid lower salaries. So, uh, to recruit and retain additional public defense staff, we will have definitely additional expense.
So since we're having a conversation here, you're absolutely right. And it is the prosecutors as well. Um, and the, our court is getting more demand, especially with the camera tickets and they're trying to find different ways to have the prosecutor and the defense available. I just had a conversation with the judge today about that where they're trying to find different days of the week to, to increase. Well, that means increase for the judge time. That means increase for the defense and the prosecution to be there. So all of those things, and I've always preached to y'all how incredibly difficult it is to find officers and the pool of applicants that come in and the amount of people, and it's really, really tough. Uh, I do want to say that the government, I mean, the government, the, um, the, the state legislature and the governor have been working really, really hard on, uh, bills that take care of law enforcement. So right now they've, I think it was around six to eight competing bills to do recruiting and retention kind of, um, uh, stuff. And so we're trying to see which one's going to play out. One of the high, um, top ones is the one tenth of 1% of sales tax in the city. So hopefully that can help some of the, of our issues that we're having here. I don't think it's going to be big enough because of our tax base, but it's still some help.
Yeah. I just wanted to highlight the court related costs because, uh, you know, as we have, uh, body cam visit, video footage and as we have, you know, rules, more rules about, um, what public defenders can, uh, the workload that public defense attorneys can carry. And then we have salary pressures beyond inflation for both of those, uh, categories. I don't think we've really focused on how substantial that's going to be exactly, but that's going to be huge, I think.
Yep. And dispatch increased and corrections are everybody that's being, uh, jailed increased. So there, there's all these other increases.
City Administrator Hill.
Just to give you a scale, we currently pay $10,000 a month for our public defenders. And so if it doubles, it's anticipated to more than double cost for cities and counties, um, throughout the state. So, um, it would be a huge hit. And as the chief mentioned, all those extra court times. I mean, there's been discussion of, you know, could we do night court? But now we have staff who now would be in an overtime or do we need to hire additional staff? So. Um, it's a gift that keeps on giving. And I've also had discussions with Shelley Helder, our lobbyist on these funds for policing, for recruitment, et cetera. You know, the one tenth of a percent clause back away from, you know, the state. So then, you know, the state has its funding issues. So you have that whole dichotomy. And then a lot of the others of them are only good for three years, kind of similar to the cops grants from, you know, 10, 20 years ago. Where it's, it's great when you hire them, but in three years, that's a hundred percent on you. So, um, you got to make sure you're not making a short-term decision that bites you three and a half years later.
Thank you. Um, so City Administrator Hill or, uh, Chief Harden? Do we have an update on what the numbers on the 24 seven traffic cameras? Like have the numbers dropped down as we anticipated?
They have stayed pretty much plateau over the last two or three months. So it looks like it's just staying pretty status quo. It hasn't really gone up or down. It's staying pretty steady. So unless, uh, mayor, because the mayor is a hawk about looking at the numbers. Yeah, exactly. Um, I do know that, uh, there, there's, there's a lot of things that happen in court too. So you can't look at the numbers and go, this is how many violations? This is how much revenue you expect? Because a lot of things change when it gets to court. Some people don't pay, it goes to collections. You have, um, the judge mitigates, some of them are kicked out because they make an argument that they don't feel can make it. Um, and so we're working through some of those things and a lot of signage and some of the, uh, arguments that are made in court, we're trying to fix those so that they can't make that argument. I can clarify those kinds of things.
Well, I recall, uh, Mayor Johnson saying when he was learning to drive, we were known as a community where you, you had to drive the speed limit or you'd get ticketed. And I think we're, we're trending that way now. So, thank you.
Just quickly, I won't belabor the point, but the chief is absolutely correct. The, the trend initially was very high and it, it's, it's stayed very consistent, uh, at a level of over 120, just for those two cameras alone. Per day. And to the chief's point, I think that there are a lot of factors about where it's going to, where it's going to fall relative to, receipts for complete streets, kinds of multimodal safety projects around the community, but our estimations are not off. They're, they're pretty consistent.
I don't want to call out the city, and so I'm not going to. But I talked to a chief and I said, how is your, uh, processing of tickets going? And they would process about a thousand a month. And then they just increased to 11,000 a month. Yeah. So it's a lot.
We, we do have to put on our to-do list, trying to get one sidewalk project. Sometime in, as a public works project.
Well, in traffic calming, we have the people that have asked for it. We've got several people there. So.
Design for two projects are actually in the C I P for the 25, 26. So surprise.
Any other questions for the chief? Yeah.
I forget. I, I don't have the six year C I P memorized. Was that funded out of the 002, those two projects?
Yeah, I think we put about $30,000. Yes.
All right. I'll have more at the, uh, P D annual report whenever we get it fan finished. And then, um, I'll have the vehicle fleet information for you next month. All right.
Thanks. Very helpful. City Administrator, anything ahead of the retreat? Okay. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.